At this time, we call the Tuesday, June seventh, twenty twenty-two for the supervisors to order. Larry McDevitt, Mike Steinis and myself, Jack Willie are your supervisors. We have Lisa and Bjorn from the auditor's office. Luann, our administrative assistant. And this morning, we welcomed Todd Kenny from Clinton County, who is helping us out as an engineer for Jackson County, and Mike Clausen. So you guys can come up and do your thing.
All right, Mike. Morning. First thing I have is a driveway permit for Brian Steinis. It's in Bellevue Township, section nineteen. It's a business entrance on the north side of three hundred and sixty-second Avenue. It's near Highway fifty-two there on the spring of kind of, we'd ask board to approve that.
A word, second, we have a motion in a second to approve the business entrance for Brian Steinis. All those in favor, I oppose. Motion carried.
The next thing I have is the fuel bits. From LP Gas, a dollar fifty-four from Hagevantage was low. Oil was the second bidder at one, about eighty-nine. We've asked the board to approve Hagevantage at an hour fifty-four a gallon.
I would second. Motion in a second to approve the bid from Hagevantage FS. All those in favor? Oppose. Motion carried.
And next, we have the bits for the gasoline and diesel fuel for the next year. River Valley Energy of Bellevue was was low on that. Gasoline was at point three four nine per gallon. Diesel fuel was at point zero eight five. And winter plant was point one three nine oh, and the diesel fuel additive was at point zero one five. We'd ask the board to approve River Valley Energy for fuel bills.
Move to approve. To the motion in a second to approve River Valley Energy from Bellevue for the fuel bill. Any further discussion?
Are we doing both of these, Mike? Is that what you're doing, the biodiesel too?
No, it's it's one or the other.
Okay.
Recommend just the straight diesel.
The straight diesel one is the twenty-three thousand?
Yeah, this is just their profit and any taxes that we have to pay. The total price we pay is a we pay a market price, which is adjusted weekly, plus their profit. And the taxes that are included now.
I mean, there's a fair amount of disparity here, so yeah.
Yeah, twenty-seven thousand dollars, I would say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Next thing we have is the utility permit for the Costa Valley Electric. And some Bellevue sex, Bellevue Township Sections two and three, and Teddy Moore, Section thirty-five. Is to rebuild a line along the three hundred and eighth street. Ask the board to approve that.
Is that overhead?
Yes.
Motion to approve. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the utility permit. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
The next thing I have is a resolution of change of some of the bridges. They went through and recalculated the hall, the load ratings on for the heavy haul. Vehicles that's required by the state, and we have a few bridges here that they need to post.
That was another ten bridges.
Already posted?
No.
This is ten additional bridges.
Additional bridges.
Takes us up to like forty-five bridges, huh?
No, we were down to twenty-one. Well, we'll be down to twenty-one by this fall, and then so then we back up around thirty. But it's because they want to have your hall legal loads.
So even the bridges that are rated three thousand, there's some of those right on the.
There are some of these that would work for eighty thousand, but not for the nine.
Not for the nine. So along with these permits, can we require inspections on the trucks? Because trucks are built for eighty thousand pound loads. Now they're overloading. What's that do for their axles and tires and brakes?
Well, they still have to meet the twenty thousand pound axle loads. Be legal. That's what the, you know, the way noise would.
Watching scale is on there.
Yeah.
So what is it now with passing you the trucks with that much traction to weigh on?
Oh, I guess I didn't see the new car that is distributed from the stairs to the drives to the.
More Jeter axles, I suppose.
Okay. So these these are gonna have to be designed before, I mean, they didn't change the limit on each axle then?
Still twenty thousand.
Okay. Yeah, I guess what what else is our options? I mean, this is.
We don't have another option, do we?
Yeah, this is recommended from who? Or from from the inspector or from the?
Yeah, IAW's or origin is still under contract to to do our low ratings.
Yeah, so this is part of theirs. So the state approves which are considered legal truck configurations. Axles and weight spacings. So they tell us which bridges, which which legal truck configurations we have to rate the bridges. So this is another group of trucks that we have to rate bridges for.
Some are smaller bridges would have the tractor almost over before the trailer hit.
So just change all our signage and stuff too?
Well, on these these bridges, yes.
But as far as the tractor trailer, they show one one truck and one truck.
We only use one weight limit on ours on our postings. We don't have the.
Okay, that's the way we do it too. Just because you don't run into this, so like you usually take the the most restrictive weight, meaning the overall tonnage, and that's what you post as, even though it might be, like you're saying, it might be a for a truck that's full length, have to, you know, part of them, axles are off the bridge, you could probably go legal, but it's still posted at one total weight.
So would they consider that? Would they come and they caught you going across this thing and you had, your axle was already passed and that you're good then?
Doesn't matter. It's you go by that sign. If I sign says twenty ton, you got more than twenty ton on, you're illegal.
On the whole truck?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I mean. So they wouldn't be legal anyway, even if the axle's crossed.
Right. It's just the weight on that truck.
That's what I always thought. Yeah, I mean, when I went across, yeah.
I hope we can pretty hard to hide the truck.
So what what can we do in the springtime when the roads get soft? When they start loading them like that?
That's they can embargo them, can't we?
For ninety days.
Ninety days? That's quite a bit.
Right there.
If you can embargo, you can embargo every road you want, but it's the enforcement part that'd be difficult.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, I think we need to look at that in springtime. I mean, it's crazy to have them heavy trucks on those roads. Going back to Animal Society. Plant the truck right in the middle of the road for days until it gets unloaded. They get out of the hole.
The, I don't know, the old timers would always say that the roads would embargo themselves. If they got bad enough, you couldn't drive through, you wouldn't drive through.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that works now.
I mean, we've been pretty lucky last couple of springs as far as that goes. As the boils and the stuff that we had, minimal.
There wasn't much this year at all.
No, no.
I. So they can, so legally they can run our gravel roads and stuff, but they can't go on the interstate highway that much weight on. Interstate is limited to eighty thousand. Or does this law change the interstate? That's better.
I'm not that familiar with the interstate, what the interstate does, but the the all of all the bridges on the state routes, I think, but I think they're rated up to a hundred and fifty-six thousand pounds. They're rated up to the what they call the permit truck, which is a hundred and fifty-six thousand.
I'm pretty sure the interstate, federal interstate highways are one of the things, unless you have a special permit, but I don't know if that. It counts.
They, once you get the permit, like you can, they can they can per- permit annual weight up to a hundred and fifty-six thousand, and you can run on their entire route as long as you have that permit. Or like for a county, you couldn't do that.
Was you looking for action on this?
Just so you know.
Resolution number?
I'm just gonna give you the resolution number is eight ninety-eight dash zero six, dash zero seven, dash twenty twenty-two.
I would make a motion to approve such resolution as presented.
One second. There's a motion in a second to approve the resolution as presented. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carried.
Yeah, that's all I have, I guess. Give you a little update on the bridge out here. They're starting to drive filing today on the south of Butler. So they're moving right along.
You seen the new map here? We're second in the nation now for the worst bridges.
Yeah.
And we passed passed a lot of make it worse.
So I guess the board have anything else for me here?
I do not, Mike.
I don't. I don't either.
There is one, they down to one lane now? Is that what you're telling?
Yeah. Yeah. Stoplights, one lane. Seems to be working all right. It's not too long to wait.
No, we were on it on Sunday and we didn't have to wait too long. It was fine. Anything for me, Todd?
Other than, I'll be here a good part of the day for the the interviews for the moderator position. So I'll be over here for a chunk of the day. Those are done, I'll probably get out.
Okay.
Good. Thanks.
Thanks for being here. Okay. This time, Mrs. Armstrong, did you want to address the board?
Um, sure. I have some copies that were given to me from the city clerk of Andrew. So that you kind of kind of follow along so that you know what's going on. You're welcome. So your first name, my first name is Diane. Okay. So do I sit here and talk or?
You can come up here.
Right up here. Because, you know, I apologize, I'm usually a human speaker, but I've been up for forty-eight hours because um, I live on two hundred and sixty-first Avenue, which is on the outskirts of of Andrew, and I got this map from Steve Tebby, who laid out all these ATV routes, him and Terry Rollins. And for some reason, one family, and if I insult anybody, I'm sorry. Burnett's will not stop running this four-wheeler up and down my dead-end gravel road. This has been going on now since May twentieth. I reached out to Steve Tebby. I told him what was going on. He gave me a copy of this. He said, these are the only routes that they can go on. They cannot legally get to two hundred and sixty-first Avenue. So I call the sheriff all the time. Um, sometimes they don't call me back. Sometimes they don't show up. Um, I have been calling numerous times on a Saturday night, probably three weeks ago, I called and two officers came up. Dan Blake and he had another officer with him. I apologize, I can't remember his name. And while that they were talking, um, up and up on my property, Robert uh, Burnett pulls up in his truck and he's screaming and yelling at the bottom of the driveway, calling me and something bitch. And I said, you people need to do something about this. You know, this cannot go go on. And they said that um, that he was upset with them because they were there. So I went and I took the time and I talked to every farmer that um, lives on this road. And Burnett's do not own property on this road because that's what they're trying to say now, but they have the right to take their four-wheeler down there.
Level B or not, for you to love.
That there, I think it's a B. And at the bottom, Tom Marcus um, has a, there's a C, and that's closed off.
I just want to make sure that we have brought this up. Is this the correct area that for board? So we can tell the board, is this what we're talking about?
Um. So. Is that two hundred and sixty-first Avenue?
That's two sixty.
So where, so here's where my place is. If you go through the town of Andrew, down Benton, and you see the Franklin Apartments, and you take a left and you go down, it goes from heart surface into gravel. That is where I live. I I live on that road.
It used to go.
So you're, there used to be a through road, correct? And then?
And it's not anymore.
That's right.
Tom Marcus closed it off, and Brian and Brian Schwager closed it off because too many people were getting hurt down there.
Is there a campground way back to?
No, he was thinking about the 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 next road up. So the people that are running up and down this road have no business to even be there. They own no land back there. The 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 landowners back there are.
Your house, Diane, right here. So we went north on Franklin.
Yep, that's my property right there. That's my house.
Okay, so we just want to make sure it's clear for the board.
That is me. All right. So they own no land back there. They they literally come all the way from Highway sixty-two because they keep the four-wheeler at their father, Jim Burnett's, in that steel building. They drive either down. Uh, they they either shoot down Franklin Street to get over there, or they shoot down Cass Street, and that's why Steve Tebby, who talked to me quite in depth about this, he said they are breaking the law. They can only go on these roads. So I talked to my grader probably fifteen times. He wants to get it under control. This is going out today to the people in the town of Andrew, showing them that you cannot legally go on that road. But if somebody doesn't physically take this and explain it to the Burnett's, they're just not gonna stop. Because now they have an obsession for this road, and it start, it started yesterday. This is just one example. It started yesterday at two in the afternoon, and they were still running last night at ten after eight, up, down, up, down, and it is so loud that I can't even hear my TV when it's on thirty-four, and I have my washing machine running off the dining room, and I can't hear. And when they get close to my livestock, because I've I've watched them and I have cameras. When they get close to my livestock, they just rev it up as loud as they can, and my horse and donkey are running. I talked to Josh and Dick Eggers. They're on the other side of the road. They were staring his cows. He probably has a half a million dollars worth of cows there. He moved them back further by Dick's place. I talked to Randy Ernst. He doesn't want him on the road. He said they have no business being on the road. I talked to Brian Schwager that owns all the land to the back by Tom Marcus. He doesn't want him there, and neither does Tom Marcus. So I I guess one of the thing, one of the reasons why that I came here is if if the sheriffs, if the sheriffs don't help us with this, then who is gonna help us?
Well, they're supposed to.
Well, they have the just just to do that. So we will discuss it with Brent and say, you know, this is a problem. What are you gonna do about it? And see if we can't get something done.
I took maps two weeks ago on a Saturday. I took my time because I work part-time days, and I work third shift at night, ten in bar. That's why I look like a wreck because I've been up all night. I've gone now two days without any sleep from them racing up and down this road, and they don't live over there. They have no reason to be over there. And what the sad part is, is they they keep this four-wheeler at their father's, which is right off the Highway sixty-two. They could go down E seventeen, about a half of a mile, and shoot out that that gravel road there, which is by Hostettler's place, and they can ride for miles. They're doing it to be ignorant. They're doing it to try to intimidate me because they know that that I live there by myself, and then I can.
So are they all eighteen years old with license and everything?
Um, here's the, here's the other part of it. To ride a a four-wheeler or an ATV, you're you're supposed to be by yourself on a four-wheeler. On Sunday, one of the Burnett's had a little girl in the front. She was probably two years old, flying down the road. Somebody needs to call the sheriff. The sheriff needs to call DHS. I used to work for for DHS. I went to college for social services. It's child endangerment. So probably ten minutes later, I see a car fly down, and the car must have picked up the little girl because then he come back and the car was following him, and the child was not on the four-wheeler. They have their small children riding them that are probably seven and nine years old. I've reported all of this to the sheriffs. I know that you have to be sixteen years old. You have to have a valid driver's license. You have to have insurance on it, and they let their children ride them up and down. They think that they're above the law. And one of the things that frustrates me is what that night when he was at the bottom of my driveway, Robert, he was screaming and yelling and cussing, carrying on and ranting and raving, and I said to the officers, I used to hide women from people like him. Why do you tolerate this? Why do you let him act like this? So he said that he wanted proof. Here's the proof right here that they can't get over there, but I think that he's the type of person that somebody's gonna have to physically go to his house and talk to him. And when Chris Fee was the mayor last year, I reached out to him because they kept going up and down, up and down. I don't know if if they're afraid of Christie, but it stopped. It stopped completely for eight months. And now that Mike is back being mayor, I think that they're gonna push it and see how far that they can go.
Well, let's see what we can do with the sheriff and the sheriff's department and explain some of the things that you've talked to us about, and that we really need to do some patrolling out there and at least let them know that they're breaking the law.
Right. And they keep saying that they have that they have the right to be over there because it's a county road. No, they they can't legally get over there. And that's what Terry Rollins told me too last year because I talked to him in depth, and Terry Rollins is a wonderful man. Steve Tebby is a wonderful man. He apologized to me and said, I'm so sorry you have to put up with this. Um, he said they have to stick to these roads. They cannot legally bear off them to even get to your gravel road. And when they laid this out, that's why that they did it like that.
Well, when we pass this, this is the exact thing that we did not want to happen, you know. This this is not what we're looking to have happen.
Right.
So we can actually take that road and say, you can't, you can't even legally ride that road. You can't legally get to it. But the point is, you still have to be able to enforce it. So it sounds like it's a law enforcement issue.
Absolutely, that's.
So we'll have to address it that way. Um, and when I can't sit there and patrol it myself, and and I'm not gonna endanger anyone else other than law enforcement.
Right.
You know.
And something else, I'm really quick because I know that you're super busy. Somebody was talking to me last night where I work at, he owns Timmerman Supper Club. So I have a lot of high-end customers that come in. He said, bring this up to the board that if they change it to a drive or a lane, then it becomes private. If you change it from two hundred and sixty-first Avenue and you change it to two hundred and sixty-first Drive or Lane, then it's private. Otherwise, since there's already a sign up saying, uh, no outlet, meaning it's dead-end gravel road, he said, why don't you ask them to put a sign up? Saying no four-wheelers, because then that way it stops them all, but yet the farmers, Randy Ernst, myself, Brian Schwager, Tom Marcus, and the Eggers can still get over there. And I talked to them all. I'm very good friends with them. And they said that they would put it in writing that they do not want these people over there racing up and down, and the farmers leave their gates open. And so they go through, they go in Brian Schwager's field. I busted one of them running through his field, and I called Brian instantly, and he got ahold of them, and those people moved out like probably a month later. They were living on one oh seven Benson Street in that yellow house next to Don Reagan. Those people moved out. They were just racing through Brian's fields, and I went for a walk down the road. And he come flying out with his ATV, and he goes, uh-oh, I'm busted. I said, yeah, yeah. I said, because I'm calling Brian right now, and I did.
So I've had some issues with people on my property too, and the police said that if I put up no trespassing signs, that gives them the right, at least can see, and it's right here in town, it's the over. But they've been in there, they've broken windows out of my dump truck and camper top, and I mean, just all sorts of damage. And he said, well, we can see them in there, but unless you have those signs up, we can't legally go after them. So everybody puts signs up. I would put those on all those farm gates, just a simple no trespassing sign. So if they come down that road and somebody's out there, they can legally go out and challenge it.
Right.
Unless they have permission from the owner.
Right. Well, with this family, the Burnett's, it's it's almost like an an intimidation thing now because I'm a woman. Because now when they go down, they like wave or they'll like glare at me. I I had somebody there cutting my grass. He's like, I would take it as almost being stalking. He said, I would never put up with that. I mean, that's my home, and I shouldn't have to put up with it.
Exactly. You're correct. And we will see what we can do to help.
That would be wonderful.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you to anybody to deal with something like that. So thanks for bringing it forward.
Yeah. So I thank you for your time.
Legal issue, we'll do what we can. Thank you.
And I will have an answer when, next week, or?
Well, we'll try to talk to the sheriff's department sometime, either today or tomorrow, and see what we can do.
So who is in charge there? Is it Brent Pilberg or is it Jim Cracker?
He's the sheriff.
Okay, because I gave these to Jim Cracker. I was told Jim Cracker is.
He's the chief deputy.
That's why I gave all of these maps to him. So they tell you that they don't have them. I dropped off nine of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for letting me speak. Have a have a wonderful day.
You too.
Thanks.
Do you want to see if Lori's available? Um, Luann, I know we've got Bill here, but.
Come down to the meeting and ask questions if there are any.
Morning, Bill.
Good morning. How is everyone?
All right, good. Thanks.
Yeah, we'll recess till we're joined by Lori. This time, we're joined by Lori Rolling and Billy Copley.
Good morning.
Um, what I have brought for the board this morning is the final plan of Bowler's Second Edition. So a little background. This is owned by multiple family members, and there's several Johns in this family with the Bowler family. But John Bowler passed away in two thousand and four, and his estate transferred fifteen acres off the Cave's Road to his children, to Mark Carroll, and then John Junior, which he goes by Jack. And the three of them owned it up until Mark passed away suddenly a few years ago, and his three children inherited its interest in the property. So um, now we have a situation which Harold Dion, Jack Bowler, Abby Gans, and and then John Bowler own this property together. One of the other children sold out her interest. So they're owning it together. And as you know, it's hard to own a small property with several people together. And so they want to subdivide this property. And I believe you have a copy of the plaque in front of you, or?
I don't think that I have.
You've seen it?
Yeah.
We got a couple.
Um. So.
I seen it already.
Okay, so what's happening is this. This area right here, Lindsay Bodenhoffer lives here, and what they're planning on doing is is Jack, they're gonna split the property up where Jack is gonna own lot three, and he's gonna sell his interest in lot three to Lindsay Bodenhoffer. We already have a purchase agreement. So when this gets approved, we're gonna close on this. Lindsay's gonna own lot three, and then her house is right here. And then lot two, this is going to Carol Dion, and Carol lives right here. So this is gonna hook up with her property. And then John Bowler lives in his father's old house right here, and him and his sister Abby are gonna own lot together, lot one together. So everyone's gonna have access to their properties, and um, they're just wanting to to divide the property so everyone can kind of go their separate ways now. And hoping that the board would approve this so that we can get this uh, this property divided, so that way we don't have to continue to worry about things in the future, and the parties can move on.
And they all have access to county road.
Yes, they do.
Yeah.
Or driveway there.
Hey, that's where I have a concern, if you're. Okay. I wish that we had a man, you know, a visual to where I could show you on a big screen. So basically.
Pull it up here.
Okay, you see it?
If they're.
Tell me where I'm.
With um, Cave's Road, uh, up by the, up by the.
So if you just.
Up by the tower.
You search. Yeah, you can search Carol Dion, Abby Paul, Abby Gans.
So are you making legal titles for each of these properties, or are you doing it like like Lindsay Bodenhoffer as parcel A, and then the next property, the new parcel G, so it's on one D?
So everyone's gonna have, I'm doing separate deeds for them. So what's happening is if the plaque gets approved, then I'm gonna do a quick claim deed, for example, for lot three, since Jack is gonna own that and sell that to Lindsay, what we're going to do is Carol, Abby, and John are gonna convey their interest to Jack. So it's gonna be quick claim deeds transferring the interest between the various lots. So that way, there's a chain of title following who owns which lots.
So if any of those properties are sold separate from where they are now, because they're legal access to them.
That's that's part of my concern because uh, because right now, lot two is gonna be like a flag that comes off here. So this would be your entrance, which is like a hundred feet wide.
a hundred feet wide. And the way the part two is written right now is has to be a minimum of two hundred lineal feet for the frontage. So is there, there's nothing in place stopping Samus Dean from taking lot number two and selling it. Correct. And there's nothing stopping Lindsay, you know, the other property, which would be this way uh, from selling it. So right now, I mean, she has enough frontage where she could sell that.
Could have two separate lots.
Yeah, but so Yeah, but Carol owns this and then this flag lot's only a hundred feet. So this one would not be uh what we consider a buildable lot right now. So they'd have to have a variance.
That they couldn't develop without a variance.
Correct. And then where this lot, not one, which is the north half of basically this, this snit here. Uh, so if those kids were to sell that, like when brother and sister, like sister took it from brother, there's really, there's there's no frontage to a road and it would have to be deeded through, there'd have to be access through an easement. So are those, yes. So are those concerns? And then two, I did find a a form, I didn't fill it out for this, but I did find a form that looks like they've used in the past on certain ones where um, on billable lot agreements. I was like a peek at that. It's it's a previous, it's a previous one. But I don't know if that's something that we need to consider on this.
So Lori, you're saying the road, the way the lots that Billy had, the way they have it laid out there, there isn't a road frontage to bit to build on that lot.
They're not standalone lots without the other property is the problem. So shouldn't they be parcel A and parcel B? I mean, I I bought extra property behind mine, my two acres, I bought another acre from a three-acre lot above the block. And so it just transferred the two parcels off of their property and on to mine without creating a new one. I can't build a house back there because there's no access to it. That would clean that up in my mind.
Well, they have them individually labeled now, lot one, lot two, lot three. That trips because it trips the minor subdivision.
A lot.
Yeah, so I mean
You can move around. You can take a section off of a property and move this line without creating a new parcel. So if if there's another, if there's two of us and there's some property in between, we can split that property. And just eliminate that as a property. It becomes half to one side, half to the other. Then they're both, then all of it's legal.
Oh, you're talking a new survey to where it's all one lot.
Well, that survey works is just the language of how it's put in the deed. You you can't have two separate deeds for the properties other than the part that Lindsay's getting up with. Maybe that splits, it makes that lot would work because it follows guidelines of the two hundred foot front.
Because you're looking at three deeds, sorry.
Yeah.
You're looking at
There'll be three deeds.
Yeah.
One deed for each of the parties.
Whoa.
It, you know, my only concern is, you know, how you guys wanna look at lot two.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, because there's nothing stopping, like you said, Carol's gonna absorb that one. There's nothing stopping her from selling lot two.
Yeah, the, I guess the one thing that would be there that would stop any anybody from developing the business in order to actually make any improvements on it, they would have to seek a variance. I mean, there's provisions in the ordinance and the statutes that I know if any attorney looks at that, it's gonna pump the brakes, so to speak, on, yeah, you only have a hundred foot wide
Right.
frontage. You know, s- somebody looks at wanting to build there, they're gonna come to Lori. If they try to do anything with that, they're gonna know that they can't. You know, without a variance.
So that's up to the board adjustment or whatever. Or bring it to them or attention and then to ours. So I don't have an issue with the family splitting the lots if they're all happy with it.
That's
I mean, they gotta deal with the consequences after the fact.
They've actually in my file, I have all the deeds signed already. I just can't file them until after the plan service recorded.
And is there any issues on as far as legal description or something like that correctly?
I, you know, honestly, I I I'm gonna say no. Uh, what happens is is when plants come in, they get distributed, they come in and and they get distributed to the auditor, the assessor and the zoning person. And I believe that Janelle has looked at this. If I am correct. And I believe that she has no objection to the actual plating of the survey onto the Beacon website. So.
And I, my only thing was just making you guys aware that there would have to be a variance.
Is there an easement that goes in there for to get to that back lot, whatever lot it is?
So on the plan of
So if they don't come out to the
There, there is. Uh, we, uh, there's another map I saw. It's it's this drive right here. It runs the property line.
Yeah, so
Driving.
So that's Heinrich's Drive.
There, there's, if you click on on this one, that's where John Bowler lives and he's got access right here to the property. You can't, it's kind of on the line. You can't see it.
So there is an easement.
Yeah, his house is back there. So he's got access to that.
And that back, and that back parcel is his too then?
That's what he's going to do is is, so if you go up here, here's where John Bowler currently lives with his wife Kayla. And right here is lot one. That's the one he's buying. So his is gonna be, he's basically getting this piece of it. Right next to his property. And then Lindsay, what she wants to do eventually is build a new house. And she's gonna own, she's expanding, she's getting about four and a half acres here. And then Carol's gonna own right around her property.
And Carol can get in there from say, from the Kays Road.
Yeah, because there's her driveway right there. Her property's gonna be right behind hers. Everybody's
Split it up so they can all get to their
Yeah, they basically, yeah, they all owned it together. They just divided it up so they can all get access to the property and that way because as they're finding out, and this has been a process trying to get through this, is is when things happen in your personal life, anybody that you have an ownership in that property with is subject to whatever's going on in your life. So if you have any civil or criminal matters that judgments attach, it follows, follows that property and it affects everyone. So by dividing it, they don't have any issues.
It seems like it cleans it up so that they're not all tied into one piece. They all have their own piece and then they can, then they have to deal with the consequences of what they are after the fact.
Yeah. And they've all, they've all consented to it. They've signed the consents. We actually have the deeds signed to transfer the properties. And I can appreciate Lori's concern with that, but I think that by virtue of the fact that um, Carol realizes the fact that if you sell this in the future, you can't just sell this lot off and expect somebody to be able to build without getting a variance from from supervisors.
And they won't be able to get to it anyway without an easement back there, right? And if she sold that back lot.
Well, essentially, yes. I mean, because of the fact that it's it would take a variance in order to get approval.
Yeah, and actually they would, uh, for for her life, they actually would because there's a hundred foot flag based on that goes into the main.
Yeah, she can get to hers from the county road, but if somebody wanted to build back there, they'd still have to give approval and in a variance there if she were to sell that lot off.
And she realizes that.
Well, I, I guess I should back up. I don't know if she realizes the full effect of it, with the fact that there's a variance for that lot. But um, they have reviewed the plat and they're all agreeing with it. So uh, I don't, I don't anticipate her having any objection to it.
Okay. What's the wishes?
Well, I, I, you know, I, uh, we're looking for action to do what to accept the plat as presented. Is that what you're doing?
Yeah.
I don't have an issue getting in between family members dividing up their property.
As long as they've agreed upon it.
Yeah, they, they, they flagged, the sir, Mike's been out there flagged it out. They all agree upon it. Yeah.
Mike Weber?
Mike Weber. Yeah, Mike Weber's went out there and flagged it all. They all agree, agree to it. And um,
Okay, Lori, do you have any other concerns?
If if the attorney is okay.
I'm okay. They, they've agreed to it. Like I said, they, they're Yeah, I think it's time, I think it's time for everybody wants to kind of do their old thing.
They all know that's harder. So it's a quick claim need or warranty?
So that just um, I believe I did quick claim deeds. Which the quick claim deed, as you know, it's not, it's just saying that whatever interest I have in it, you have, I'm not making any warranty claims, meaning I'm not backing it up. It doesn't affect anything as far as chain of titles. It's just like saying you're buying a car asset. But as part of the plating process, I had to go through and um, do a title opinion and title is clear. But we just did quick claim deeds between different families.
Okay, but if you have a clear title, you could do a warranty.
You, you can and we will be doing one for one of the lots here. It's gonna be a warranty before it goes to Lindsay.
I'm just thinking of future.
Yeah.
Because I mean, everything's right there now. If you do it now, instead of waiting twenty years, then they come back and says, oh, why isn't this? I don't know.
Yeah, no. The the transfer between Jack and and Lindsay, that's gonna be a warranty. She has an attorney representing her and they have the abstract right now.
And to me, that should be up to, it should be up to, is the attorney's agreeing on the family. I'm not gonna step between a family or his attorney and say, no, you can't.
Yeah, that they're all
You're, you're gonna accept the the consequences of whatever it is when it's all
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And they, they all agree to it. The attorney's that is uh, helping Lindsay purchase her lot is on board with everything. And when we get this approved, um, we'll get it closed here in the next hopefully couple of weeks.
I would make a motion to approve the resolution for a minor subdivision of Bowler's second edition.
Motion and a second. And further discussion? All those in favor?
Bye.
All right, motion carried.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good day.
You too.
I need to sign it.
The vote. There's a there's the
Yes, you will.
There's the resolution. I have a copy with me and you.
I, no, I have the resolution.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
Are you gonna be around today if you want?
Yeah. I'll be busy. Thank you.
Yep.
And I'll need to sign the resolution then? And you do not send the resolution. You don't have to sign the plat. So there's, there's signatures for the plat, but the board will sign the resolution. Okay, so the, I'll just get with you later on that. Uh, let's try tomorrow. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. Okay, next on the agenda is Lisa.
I'm okay uh, deferring since Lynn is here. Lynn, are you still in training today? I I'm okay deferring until, if you're okay with that, Jack.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Being joined by Lynn Meadier.
It'd be nice.
No, it keeps getting worse. So last year, you know, we wrote that E O C grant. Basically put on paper, sign up to, hints us up as well. We got approved. Wow. I received a phone call last week from B C. Well, they they can get ahold of me. Wow. So they finally got ahold of me. They released the grant details uh, May thirteenth. Then they, and I sat down with Shelley. We put stuff together. And from there, I sent it out to the state, working with the state. She come back last Friday with about seven bullet points. And I got another one to add today. Number eight. It goes, you, since it's a federally funded grant, we gotta do the Davis Bacon Act. We gotta do uh, four twenty-nine C is or
Four twenty-four.
Four twenty-four C paperwork. Um, we have to, you know, what's going into this E O C? Where's, where's the money going? You have to track the wages, you know, a lot of stuff that's in there. You can read them. I don't have it in front of me. The second, this, the number eight today, when I was on the phone with Tara Dowd, she goes that they reenacted Build America, Buy America, Build America Act. So everything that's put into that E O C has to be bought in America. So that was reinstated today, or this last year by their federal government. So the federal government's really making us hard to get this money when they're handing out left or right there to anybody else. This is a question that where do we want to proceed from here? Because Well, it's certainly logical that we gotta be held accountable for what we're, what they're giving us, I suppose. And I don't know how detailed that we can do with that. My problem with the whole thing is, and we've talked about this, is this should have been upfront with us. This should have, all of this should have been given to us before we applied. After we get, after somebody says, yeah, you can, you can have the money, but here's not what you gotta do.
Yeah.
Yeah, and which is gonna cost us more money. And that is not okay with me. That that just makes me angry to say, if that's how that thing works, then don't even offer it to them. You know.
And the biggest issue is the Davis Bacon. I mean, the salaries for the rest of the
Well, we don't even know what the contractors are doing at that stage, right? Do we? We don't know what they're paying or how, if they're close to Davis Bacon or whatever it is. I guess we don't know.
My chances are they're not.
Well, you know, I guess I don't know how much, what is Davis Bacon?
I talked to my colleague out in Benton County. Um, they got their sheriff's office through the flood of two thousand eight through the P A. And where his E O C grant was set and his new speed was gonna be a parking lot, but then he got an E O C grant and and he had to keep track of all the time cards and everything else, you know, all that stuff.
So if we get this money, uh, what's the build time, you know, when we have to spend?
After September first of twenty twenty-two.
After.
After and before.
The big I mean, the only thing I came up with is remodeling the sheriff's office with that money if we can't use it down there.
You're still in the same, you're still in the same boat though. You're still in the same
Well, it's just for
parameters of what they want.
You're gonna have to go out for bid and you're gonna have to
But it's just one building and it's separate. It doesn't flag that whole project down there, which is millions of dollars. This would be a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar job. I I mean, I just thought of that this morning.
Well, and I did, but we have to have this turned in back by June or June thirteenth. I mean, we got, it's just totally bogus what they pulled, you know.
So suggestions? I mean, when you started this process, your, your, your gut feeling is the same way. You know, you went through all the, all the work here and submitting everything and finding information and getting information and submitted to it. All of a sudden, yeah, we're granted this money. But oh, now wait. Now we gotta send the money somewhere. Now that we sent it over here to Kansas City or wherever it is, now this is what you gotta do to get it. I thought we did anger it.
We were talking, you know, yeah, we can say, you know, the plumbing costs this, but I asked Tara, well, will will they come back and ask, well, give me the list of costs to break down what that toilet costs for this and the toilet for that and what's plumbing and I don't know what.
Might be easy enough to break it down and say, you, you, you tell your contractor and say, well, I've got X amount of wiring. It's worth X amount of dollars. I got a toilet and fixtures that's worth X amount.
The only thing, I kind of threw it out to Scott, you know. I probably got the Benton County. It's a nightmare, but what happens if you just buy supplies with it?
Okay.
And then the question is, and then it's gonna be the county nightmare. Okay, you do this and John will give us, or however you break down the bill, the E O C walls cost this.
Yeah. This, I mean, talking about just, just the roof, this is concrete roof is what, how many dollars do we gotta?
Right. I don't know. That's
There's a breakdown for that roof.
So, okay, so here it is. And if you just say, I'm just buying materials. And if you can prove that these materials are bought from America, I guess that's something you guys gotta decide. I don't know. That's just
To the other building, then the Davis they can, well, you're just doing the materials thing.
Materials for the E O C, boom. So whatever the costs are up is seventy-five thousand.
We still have to prove though, those costs.
Right. And if he, if John, that's something the board has decided.
John says these are our actual costs or the contractor, whoever, subcontractor has said, listen, what it cost for the material.
I'm brave. I don't know.
I mean, if it's something, I get your side of it too. It's gonna be a terrible
It's gonna be a nightmare
Yeah.
For the auditor's office.
So is it even worth it to us and we don't know? Don't shake your head till you even hear me out.
I, I haven't shook my head. Oh, I was, oh, she's shaking. I was like, I haven't shook my
Your counterpart is.
Okay.
But do we, okay, let's say we do this in escrow. So we have a third party keep track of all that for us and pay out of, you know, pay that out of there. It's tough to give up two hundred and sixty thousand, but if we can have a third party say, I will manage all of this for you for X amount of dollars. Can we use it for that also? I mean, again, you say this is a nightmare and it probably would be.
Well, it is. And fortunately, Scott on Benton County, they had the Law Center already bid and then he bid his E O C. So the auditors really managed in two projects, but they were bid separately, which helped them out.
Yeah, so Yeah, so they could just take that part of it and say, this is it. Yeah. I mean, I guess that's where I'm looking at too. I'm gonna take. This part of that A O C, whether it be just the roof and. Materials or whatever and say, this is what we're using it for. I I don't know. I I don't think. I can't say whether it's working or not working, you know.
But I think when we when I talked to Lisa and Shelley yesterday, the big problem is what is the state auditor gonna do to us? When they come in and audit us, are we gonna have all the dots, eyes dotted and the T's crossed? And are we gonna are they gonna sign off on our audit or are they gonna find have findings for us? Which we don't want.
Well, I I agree with that. I I what can they say? We we've done everything they've asked and this is what, you know, we've wrote down or we documented. Just like everything else.
The problem is that you have so much common stuff within the building. I mean, in essence, what you have is a room with a building built around it.
Yeah.
And so you have common walls and common plumbing and shared bathrooms and a shared parking lot. You know, how do we according to the conversation that we had was at Tara on Friday? You know, we have to be able to prove that um. The cabinets that are in this i- this area, um this is how much they cost. And right now, I have no way of telling anybody how much the cabinet, the carpeting, the walls, the. Plumbing, the electrical, you know, then you get into the whole security part of it. Um you know, the wifi, the I mean, think of all of those elements. There's no way that I can have anybody say that this is exactly what we. Spent in this room.
And so.
Security systems up up to the whole building.
Right. So. With you talking to Tara, both you talking to Tara, wh- what's her take on all this? I mean, what word does she say? I mean, she's on the other end of it. She's representing or working for.
If we take her other two grants, she'll do this one. That's what she told us and we, I mean.
What do you mean the other two?
Well, E M P G more federal grant.
Yeah.
That she handles.
Well, you know, I'm reading this one about the about the poultry and the. Meat poultry grants that are out there now, yesterday, whatever email we got on. Who knows this? Who's the public that knows it? I mean, how but anyway, back to this.
It's a little bit like I told Jack yesterday. The problem is is that if you think of a lot of this stuff as like a ladder. Unfortunately, we should have known at the bottom rung of the ladder about all of this stuff. But unfortunately, we're finding out probably at about the second rung of the ladder.
From the top.
And she said, we're not the only.
Yeah.
We're not the only organization that's scrambling and.
So how can how can they expect us when they we were already granted it or approved for it? And now come back and say, well, you gotta spend all your money on. I don't know what to say. I I.
That's why.
It's frustrating.
It is frustrating. There's so many unanswered questions about how you're gonna how you're gonna make all the pieces fit together. Without having problems afterwards.
Well, and like I said, so the grant I wrote that went to Henson's office, I sent to her and she plugged it into this formula or this. Uh I can't remember what she has fill out.
And to me, that should be good enough.
She she plugged it in there. She says, oh, you gotta finish this. We need this, this and this. And so I said, now Shelley did that and then all of a sudden. This is even longer than the five page I had to do to. To send it there.
I mean, I get it. They don't want us buying, you know, one million popsicles. I get it. They wanna make sure that the money that we've been given, that we've used it. Appropriately. I totally understand that, but I think that our situation is unique. We're not building a standalone building. We're building a building around a room and trying to prove this. I'm not gonna say it's impossible. I'll say it's next to impossible. Everything's possible.
I know.
We have to start working with the contractors. I mean. And I don't know how well, how easily the contractors are gonna be able to.
Pull things out. Okay, we use twenty feet of copper wiring.
Yes.
And outlet costs twenty bucks, you know, and they can go through and count the outlets and put that in there, but I don't know if that's.
So what happens if we come up with two hundred and forty thousand? We owe them. We owe them money. So.
But we have, if we get it all, we can give part of it back if that's the case, but again. I mean, even talking about the third party, would that even be an option? But then all of a sudden, you're throwing good money at bad money. You don't even know if you got it.
That's right.
You know.
I just know Lisa said yesterday. I'm gonna ask you to turn it down.
You know what? I don't like to say that. I do not like to say that. I never like to leave. But my recommendation is that honestly, I cannot put my name on this. Because I'm afraid that we're gonna get this jail bill and the we're gonna and we're not gonna pass audit. And all of a sudden, they're gonna ask for their money back because I can't prove all of these costs.
We did that conservation for the trail from the shelter down to the road. They would give us a hundred thousand dollar grant for that and then they give us a list of all the stuff that we needed. And I think I I W was doing the engineering at times and well, that pushes that engineering up over a hundred thousand dollars. We had engineering done for sixty five hundred dollars.
Right.
By direct contract. Um yeah, I mean, it's just okay. That's it's not worth it.
It is and that's sad. Yeah.
So I mean, I I guess. It you you both know how you feel about Tara Dowd here. I'm guessing she's telling you what she thinks. I mean, I.
She's very careful with what she says.
I'm sorry.
She's very careful with what she says.
She's been in this situation.
Yes. But she totally understood on Friday when we were visiting with her. She totally understood our predicament.
Well, what about? I mean, it's crazy, but ask her about you doing that. The question is, I mean, we need to be out of there and in there before we do it from there. So is that timeline? And I know that's not what you want or what you need.
So Larry, you're talking about. The old sheriff's office turning that into the E O E O C.
But yeah, it's not feasible. That's not feasible either because that building is just.
Right, and we need to be with the sheriff and that's what we're doing today. You know, we're trying to be.
We're better.
We're integrating and that's part of this training today.
Turn the money down and just build it on our own.
Sad, but. Like I'm just here relating the information. You gotta go on their vice so.
So have you talked to the Henson campaign at all?
Yeah, that'd be a nice call to make to say.
I just wanna make sure.
What the hell? Yeah.
I I guess I just wanna make sure that we're. I really do hate to turn money down.
Yeah.
I think we should try to get a waiver for after the primary and.
The problem is is that the clock is ticking. That's really the issue.
So we have till the thirteenth, you said.
I have till I have till Ja- July, June eleventh, probably when it is thirteenth, Monday.
Monday.
Have it in on the thirteenth, so we have to have our stuff.
She's asked me if I could have it to her today.
Yeah, I was gonna say on Friday she wanted it by today.
We don't have anything but an estimate. We can't even call a contractor and say, what is it gonna cost? I mean, that's the that's. That's not feasible.
Exactly.
Well, I would call Ashley and just tell her our dilemma, what's happened and see if they can can.
Have has anybody actually talked to John Hanson to see what his thoughts are about pulling these figures together?
Well.
I mean, it's.
John and I are already having a discussion about the bond money and.
Um yeah, yeah, yeah.
And if I ask him to talk about the E O C grant money. It may not be a favorable conversation.
You know, the whole thing is, I mean, he's our building manager and he's the one that has to see us through this whole process. Um.
I think it should be a call made just for an opinion from them. Do we give the money back or do we go forward and just, I mean, is there? Any reasonable way to get this together? About triggering all the other.
Well, here's here here it is in a nutshell. If we don't make the timeline, we don't get it anyway.
That's right.
So we don't have to do a damn thing, be honest. I mean, we can try to make these calls and I can try to get a hold of Vincent and the chief of staff or whatever and say, this is our dilemma here. Or we we don't have, we don't have the timeframe that, you know, you give it to us and now they said we gotta jump more hoops. We gotta do it three days.
That that really honestly is kind of a question that I'd like to have answered. I mean, we've known about this receiving this grant for quite a while. What what triggered it now?
You know, if from day one, we knew there were these consequences that we had to go through to get the money. We could have been working on it for at least a month and a half.
Absolutely.
Now, we have three days.
Yeah.
With no answers.
And so that's really my, I guess, one of my questions is, what happened? Where do we?
Our question about auditing and state auditing and da da da. If we turn in all our all our stuff and. And you say we get started by the state, well, why wouldn't we pass? We did exactly what you told us to do, but. You know.
But the federal, but keep in mind, this is a federal grant. So now we have to pass the federal, the federal auditing side of this. Because this is federal money. And she she point out point blank told me that they needed that they would wanna see the exact cost. Associated with this this room.
But we can't do that.
Well, it's possible, Jack, but it's gonna take more time than three days. And and and.
That was the point. I mean.
Yeah.
We can't physically do that.
No.
Without them taking the time to do it for us.
Right.
Or give us the information and I don't think you're gonna get them to do it.
I would probably agree with you.
I I I don't, I yeah, I I don't know.
Work it would take.
Yeah.
Well, it it, you know, on one side of the spectrum, it sounds like it's it's just a bowl of spaghetti. Yeah. But on the other side, maybe a contractor that's his, that's his profession.
And ask him if he wrote that out for the. Cause we've been talking about this for the last couple of years.
But we need the actual cost, though. I mean, Rick can probably give you an estimate. Would be my guess, but the actual cost based on the bill.
Prices are going.
You're right.
And that's what that's one of the things. How do you when we sit in there, we can't tell you the origins because.
Mine I was for the ceiling and all this other stuff. And that's an estimate. And when you get done, you'd have to plug in the actual cost of that.
I mean, we have accepted bids for the project, but still to break it down, each contractor is gonna have to break it down, be it the plumbing, electrical. The concrete, the whatever it is, yeah.
And that's a question, you know, I don't know.
Do they make it impossible? So you back away?
You know what? This would all work if we had a standalone building. But we don't.
Yeah.
That's really, I mean, if you think about it, if we had a standalone building, no problem.
But to me, common sense, and I don't know if this goes anywhere with 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 any of this, common sense and logic says. This is this is a percentage of the building, so this is this is what it's gonna cost us, but they probably won't accept that.
But I asked that.
Yeah.
I asked that if we could take a square foot of the room. You know, against the whole building. And she says the federal government is gonna wanna know the actual cost of things in that room.
How would the federal government know?
Here's your piece of paper. I don't know.
I guess I I I'm I'm not ready to say no. But, you know, other than making a few phone calls and if we can't extend it, if we can't, if we can't possibly make this work, then. Our timeline is gonna diminish it.
You have to down there putting water lines.
Is.
Water lines in today.
And that's, I mean, I see, but we can't, you know.
And you have. Terrorist number correct somewhere?
Yeah, it's right on there. It's about five one five somewhere. That two five.
She found our pain. She was very.
You know, and and the only thing I can do if I can, I can try to get a hold of. Chief of Staff or Ashley herself and say, you know, we're tied.
Yeah.
And I mean, I can throw some of that stuff together, but it's just you gotta get the answers you need to make sure you're following the federal guidelines.
Well, and Lyndon, we need figures from the contrast contractors.
Yeah, that that's.
Well, you're not gonna get that by in that timeframe.
And I don't think there's even a breakdown on how much is labor and how much is material. I mean, the ceiling is.
Well, they we they would have that in their whole figures when they figured their bid, I would think, but they. They give us a lump sum to do the job. But when if you're sitting in your office bidding the project, you're gonna definitely break down your numbers. I would think I.
So should we give Rick a call and see if if there is a breakdown that he's done?
Who are we talking to about Rick?
I assume Rick White or the.
I mean, because we talked about this for quite a while, using that room for that. You know, and at one point, we broke it out to figure out how much it was and that was the two hundred fifty something thousand. Or three twenty five, whatever.
Two sixty two, then three twenty five.
Yeah.
And that's, you know.
And part of that was what the original was and we put the country group on it to upgrade it to make it that. And maybe he has those numbers. I don't know.
That that's what I'm saying. And we could just take that part of it. That part of the page, right?
Maybe we have to come up with that number somewhere.
Keep in mind, though.
That's labor and material.
Labor and materials and they wanna know what the actual cost of that room is.
Nobody will know until it's finished.
Well, I think there probably has to be some kind of a pretty good estimate on that.
I mean, actually, we've got a bid, so we know what the actual cost will be when it's done. We just don't know.
What what's the E H P? Tell me what the E H P is. Environmental, what?
Like an H P. That's the environment has.
So we're looking for dinosaur bones. Is that what you're saying? It's in the city limits and it's in an industrial island. Why would we?
I looked it up and I just. Forgot I have to look it up again.
This is this is what they asked for. This is a twenty twenty two E O C investment justification. So the requested F Y twenty twenty two E O C grant was um. The total cost of the project is three hundred fifty thousand. We requested two hundred sixty two thousand five hundred. And we did a matching funds of eighty seven thousand five hundred. And we had to describe where we were gonna come, where we were gonna get the money at. They also asked us um. The investment justification, describe at a high level what will be implemented and accomplished by this project investment. They talked about a a facility assessment, a needs assessment.
Which we did, correct?
So was there a was there an assessment done for the E O C? I mean.
Oh, yeah, we don't have one. You don't really have, you know, you don't have one that's functional.
Specifically for the E O C.
Right.
Here they talk about answered resistance guidance. Uh again, they talk about our funding plan and our funding sources, our investment challenges. Project management. And our milestones. Provide descriptions of up to ten major milestones that are critical to the success of this investment.
And they just need it for the E O C. They don't need, they don't want all the other B S. Cause we put we put a new one of them together, sent it to her. She fired right back.
She came back with the eight bullet points that they still want more information. And again, I don't know. How do we prove that everything is American?
I should know, right? The the Buy American, Build America Act.
We get a certificate. I mean, how do we prove that? I have no idea.
Well, I would think our construction manager could tell us where it come from, but. I mean, even the contractor can tell her where he bought it, where it's who who built it. I mean, I would think these concrete panels.
It'd be a stamp on it somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, those are just some of those challenges that we're talking about.
I guess if we have him sitting in the room with us, then maybe they can answer, but I, you know, to pull all that together in. That kind of timeframe and to get an answer. Yeah. Do we talk to Rick? Do we talk to? The electrical contractor and say, how much is it gonna cost to do that room? Do you, you know, what you do? It it ain't done in a day.
Well, yeah, it's all over.
Yeah, how do you avoid that? Some of that show up somewhere. So you. Make phone call to Rick. Phone call to Tara. Make phone call to Ashley and maybe you'll have your answers, what you wanna know.
Okay. I will take on trying to get a hold of Ashley or her chief staff and and. If I need to call Tara for it.
Direction or so little guy answers, see what you. See what you can do.
And if you wanna try to get a hold of Rick and see if there's any possible way to break it down, so you can break down and say, this, the roof of that building is gonna cost us. That's all we're applying for. You know, if we get a hundred and fifty thousand for the roof of that building or whatever it is.
Anything helps, yeah.
Yeah, that's one piece of the puzzle and. Maybe maybe we can document.
Yeah.
You got Rick's number? Maybe it's, it's on a plan here.
I was just gonna say, yeah.
So, um.
I mean, I guess then you're gonna have to coordinate back with Lynn, if, you know, to see.
You think you just send the information, then just give me a call.
We could do that after the fact here.
Yeah.
Jack's gotta move on here, so.
Yeah.
At this point, uh, I would take a motion to table the action on the E O C grant.
Okay, we have a motion, and second to table action, the question is. How long are we tabling it for? Are we going to have another special meeting this week?
If we need to, we will.
Oh, we need twenty-four hours notice to do that.
Yeah, we need to decide whether we're going to, when we're gonna get able to get this information, or at least. Need to say we're not gonna take the money.
I guess that's the meeting, the meeting, not to take the money, but I guess. Do you need one to keep moving forward, cause we're already there?
Rather, crap, the date is almost today, isn't it?
And Jack's gone on Thursday.
Whatever. Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, Wednesday afternoon.
Together, I'll throw it together this weekend, and maybe, and just, I don't know. Rick will tell you a lot, the answer from Rick and the answer from.
I guess the, the, the bigger question is, is if we give them more information, and I don't know of those eight bullet points, how many we can actually accomplish or not? And, um, Lynn sends it into Tara, the question I would have is. If we don't supply enough information, are we dead in the water, or will they continually keep coming back to us for more information?
That's a question you might ask her.
Yeah. We just need to know if we keep supplying the information, you know. But.
Moving, yeah.
If, if we don't supply it by the thirteenth, and that's when she needs it, so she can. Bring it in, process it, to send it back out. That would be my question.
Is this a Sarah question? I mean, that's a Sarah question, isn't it?
I would say yes.
My guess is, if even if I get a hold of somebody from the Henson staff, but they're not.
Chances are very slim.
No, she just, she'll shake your hand, congratulations.
So who's, who's, who's gonna, you're gonna talk to Tara then and see. And then you talked to her before, you wanna see if, if we try to get this put together, how much more is gonna come out? Do you wanna do that?
I can do, I talked to her this morning.
Yeah.
So Rick's got a song number here, but no area code.
Four oh two.
What is it, four oh two?
Four oh two.
Okay, I'll tell. Talk to Tara, and then I'll email everybody.
I'll see what I can do. Wait, after, after, we get out here.
My question is. Let's say we do get the money, we come, we come up with what information that they want. They give us the money, they give us the go-ahead, we go ahead and do this. What documentation and what reporting? Aspects are, are we going to have to deal with, with just the Ashley Henson grant? On top of the Arpa grant, on top of the bond grants, or the bond reports and all of that stuff. Trying to keep track of that and keep it all separate is gonna be a nightmare. I'm just putting that out there.
Well, I, I think certainly you're gonna have to report what you spent the money on for that part of project, and that goes along with the cost of the. Of the, if we can get some cost figures. For engineering and say. How, how else are we gonna know until they're done, if our contractor not done with it? How is he gonna know? How much time he's got involved in this part of it?
Well, and he might have a bid for so much material, and so much for labor, and all of a sudden, the material went up, now he's. He's gonna eat it in the labor part, so he meets his bid. You don't know that.
We have a lot of question marks in a very short timeframe.
In that, yeah. And then there's always that threat of, uh, well, now you gotta pay David's baking wages, or. Or pay up the difference, or whatever, I mean, I don't know.
Okay, so, um. I, I actually made a motion, so I don't know what you're gonna do with that. Okay, but we didn't know until, we gotta add to it.
Till when?
That's a good question, we don't know when. We don't know what, and we don't know how. Yeah. We didn't know.
Oh, Jack, you were reading my mind, I'm.
Well, I'm having Luanne call to tell them I might not be there this afternoon, is, uh. I'd have to, I should have left twenty minutes ago to be in West Burlington by one o'clock, so, um. If I can call in, I will just call in this afternoon, but, um. I don't know what the answer is.
Nobody knows what the answer is.
You're going, set, you're going Thursday, you said, ready?
Yeah.
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 Well, if you don't submit anything, it just dies in the water, anyway, right?
Yeah, let's speak, yeah, off with another. We don't need to take action.
Yeah.
It's on the agenda, that's, it's on our agenda, though, so we either have to address it or take no action. If we tabled it, that was basically no action.
Yeah. So we did have a motion to table, and we had a second, so. I'm gonna just say, all those in favor of the motion?
All right.
All right.
I, motion carry.
Yeah, okay.
I'll do my contact.
Yeah, if you send an email, I'll see what I can find out, it's.
We'll just be talking to each other, how about that?
Yeah.
We'll do the best we can and see what happens.
Sounds good. Hi.
You've done a lot of time today.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the effort, anyway.
I'm just looking. Yes, please, if you would be, that'd be great.
Jeff, I think it's two and a half hours to get down this, so I think you're all right, if you leave in ten, fifteen minutes.
Okay, I'll be quick, how's that?
And I, in terms of the demonstration for the. Um, is the. Demonstration we were looking for, with, with, um, a few permits demonstration. Does anybody have anything going on the twenty-fourth? Because right now, it was like that day is completely clear. Everybody.
What are we talking about?
The permit program that goes between the departments. Ryan from Schneider is gonna come to the demonstration.
Oh, that's what Lori was, oh, I.
Yes, we're trying to find a date for it.
Looking at the twenty-third?
Nope, I was looking at the twenty-fourth, that's Friday.
And I am not available on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, how about?
Not that she needs me.
How about the sixteenth?
You know, the point is, is between these offices, what you guys need to gather, I mean, whatever is best for them, I, I. My input to that is minimal to me.
Our input is basically your recommendation.
Yeah, that's right.
Honestly, we don't even know if this is a viable program.
Yeah.
So I think that once we see the demonstration, we'll know if this is something we're interested in or not.
And I think that's, the offices that are involved need to make that decision.
Yeah.
I think so, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll go to Lisa.
Yep.
For her agenda items.
Yep, so I need to approve the minutes of the, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two board proceedings, as written by Auditor Smith. And authorize publication in the official newspapers.
Motion to.
Second, the motion is second to approve publication of the previous board minutes, all those in favor.
All right, hi.
Motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-five cents.
The move, second. Motioner's second to approve the claims, all those in favor.
And, hi.
Motion carry.
A motion needed to accept, place, and file an authorized, the chair's signature, and the county recorder's reported piece collected for the month of May twenty-twenty-two. In the amount of sixty-nine thousand, seventy-eight dollars and forty-five cents.
Listen to it, Chris. I didn't see that, do we have it in here somewhere? I was second, but I didn't see the.
I didn't see it either.
I, I.
Just passed it out.
I, I will pass it out, I, I got a little way late this morning.
The motion.
That's a nice number.
Yeah.
To approve the, um, recorder's monthly report, all those in favor.
All right.
On the motion carry.
Motion needed to approve the renewal of a Class B native wine permit with Sunday sales to Friends of Jackson County Conservation. At eighteen-six seventy-sixty-third Street, Macoka, effective June third, twenty-twenty-two to June second, twenty-twenty-three.
Motion to approve. Motion is second to approve the Class B native wine permit. For the conservation board, all those in favor.
All right.
I, motion carry.
I also need a motion to approve and authorize the chair's signature on the contract with Beckwith Commercial Roofing Inc. for a total bid of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and five dollars.
Motion to approve.
And that was.
And they did make those changes that you requested.
Yeah, I would second.
Motion is second to authorize the chair's signature on the contract with, with commercial roofing, all those in favor.
All right.
I, motion carry.
And that's all that I have to report today.
Okay, next up is Lynn Goke, our administrative assistant.
Morning.
Good morning. Which of all the business I have today? In the calendar, so. Then five this afternoon, Jack's supposed to be in West Burlington for a workforce meeting, so we need to get him out of here pretty soon. Um, at three o'clock, the green space redevelopment meeting for Larry was canceled. Um, at five o'clock, is specifically workforce executive meeting by Zoom for Jack. Um, which you're probably doing for Miss Carter. Wednesday, June eighth, at nine AM, we've got Larry on Just Talk Radio Show. And at ten o'clock is the zero to five and sixty minutes by Zoom for Jack. Thursday, June ninth, at ten AM, is an Iowa DHS council meeting, um, by Zoom for Jack. Because he will be in Marshalltown all day, um, for the, um. Iowa Workforce Training, which. Wasn't gonna go to, but then they decided needed to be there, so he will be there all day tomorrow, all day Thursday. Um, from ten to three is the webinar on the local flip plane management for officials by Zoom, for any of you that wanted to do that. Friday, June tenth, at ten AM, is Seventh Judicial District, um, Department of Corrections meeting for Larry in Davenport, or by Zoom. Monday, June thirteenth, at seven-thirty AM, is an early childhood Iowa Executive Committee meeting, and do it for Jack. And our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, June fourteenth, at nine AM. And that is the same day as the Iowa Watership Approach Bus Tour invented, which I haven't heard that any of you wanted to go on, so.
It wasn't. How far is that from here?
Two and a half hours.
Two and a half hours.
That's how far it is to get to Milton.
Wow. It's out there, it's a long ride.
Yeah, so we can talk about, if you wanna go, I'll see what I can do.
Well, it's five hours on that bus, the bus tour, that's the.
Yeah, all day. Right, so that's all I had for you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, is there any other business to come before the meeting, Danny?
All right, talk to you. Come to mine this morning, and the cleaner was, had been sick. So she intends to get down there today. Touch base with him again later. Any more discussion on how we do the matter? On how we do what, to sell that property?
Well, we just have to make sure that it's. Explain that, I mean, I, we have to make sure that it's, uh, in a position that we can show it.
Yeah.
Did you call and talk to Alex about? Serving.
Serving.
You should do that.
Yeah, that was just a.
We should have tried to find the. I thought you were gonna, I thought you said you were not talking, but.
Put that on your list.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That we know exactly where we're at, what we have.
Yeah, and we need to, we're gonna advertise this.
Yeah.
And then, and then I think we talk to the attorney, our county attorney, and ask, you know, how do we put it up for bids? And then, do we open the bids and allow them to advance their bid?
I agree.